City County School Board, can I have a board member to certify closed session please?
Madam Chair, certified to the best of each member's knowledge that the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted it from opening meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law. And that only such public matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle, is there a second?
Second, thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
And can I get someone, uh, can I get an approve, a motion to approve the agenda please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Mrs. Donner, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cabasos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye. Alright, we'll move on to announcements and superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reserve your seat for our October twenty-third Family Academy, Family Focus, Building Healthy Tech Habits Together. We're going to do a dive into Dr. Jonathan Haidt's research on the impact smartphones and social media can have on mental wellness, presented in his book, The Anxious Generation. You'll be able to self-select breakout sessions designed to support your family in navigating safe and healthy tech use. Raffle prizes including chances to win Dr. Haidt's book will be available and childcare will be provided. Learn more and reserve your seat on our website, wjccschools.org. By the way of preview, preview, tomorrow is National Custodian Appreciation Day. WJCC custodial staff members work year-round to maintain safe and healthy spaces in all WJCC schools and offices. Whether it's tomorrow or any day of the year, be sure to thank our custodial staff for their tireless efforts serving our community. And I certainly want to extend my thanks this evening for our amazing custodial staff, you are truly the best. Finally, October is bullying prevention month and specifically Wednesday, October sixteenth is Unity Day. Mark your calendar now and join us in wearing orange on October sixth, sixteenth, as a unifying visual indicator that we stand against bullying. Thank you, Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, and I believe we had two board member reports, Mrs. Hunley, one go ahead.
Yes, I serve on the Williamsburg James County Foundation, school foundations. And they have tasked me to, to be head of their social media on Facebook, I figure.
I shouldn't wonder why.
So, everybody got a copy of the impact report and the community will be getting this as well. But, you know, to see stuff like this on paper, it's different when you see it in action. So, my task is to interview a lot of these teachers that you see, that they're featuring here. And put them live on the Facebook, on the foundation page, so the donors can see the kids in action and see that, hear from the teachers how much they appreciate the money. And so the money will keep coming, so that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Mr. Hosang, did you have something?
Yes, the Board of Trustees for New Horizons had a special executive meeting last week. It was to discuss a recommendation regarding the approval of an executive director for New Horizons. At the meeting, the Board of Trustees took the recommendation and did approve the recommendation for the new executive director. I have seen a email come out regarding that, so I feel like comfortable to announce that Dr. Marcia Kaylee, from Isle of Wight. She's the Director of Curriculum and Professional Development there, she has been selected as the new executive director for New Horizons, so.
Alright, thank you for that update, any other reports from board members or anything? Okay, then we will move on to five point zero one, review amendment of FY twenty-five grants fund budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Miss Ewing is going to give us a quick update on our grants budget this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This agenda item for your consideration is to amend our grants fund budget to reflect an additional grant that we have received in the amount of fifty-one thousand seventy-nine dollars. The grant is a partnership with William &amp; Mary's School of Education to assist pre-service and beginning teachers in making a successful transition into full-time teaching. The grant will provide training and mentoring for teachers designated as clinical faculty and/or new teacher mentors during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. With the addition of these grant funds, our new grants fund budget will total eight million five hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred ten dollars and fifty cents. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Miss Ewing, Mrs. Hunley.
I do, I have two questions, it says here they'll be providing training and mentoring for teachers. Who's doing the training and when, when does that occur, that's my first question.
Dr. Kiefer to address those questions.
The training is done through the College of William &amp; Mary and it helps prepare our host teachers to work with cooperating students from William &amp; Mary as they're pursuing their education degrees.
Okay, so that's done.
That's done in order, you are trained as a clinical faculty member before you are eligible to host a student-teacher.
Okay, and that's open to any teachers or just the ones in the William &amp; Mary program?
It, it is geared towards the William &amp; Mary Student Teaching Program. So, we sometimes host student-teachers from other local colleges and universities, but this is specifically related to the College of William &amp; Mary. And a program that they offer for surrounding school divisions. Previously, the grant ran back through the college. However, VDOE has made a change in their grant process and wants there to be a school division to serve as a fiscal agent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, if I could add, Ms. Hunley, it's a program we've run for years, but William &amp; Mary has managed the budget, but we're doing that now by request. But, I think what happened to the school level, we recommend teachers to serve as clinical faculty for their students and those are the teachers that are, are trained. And then they also, it helps in, in training to be mentors within our system as well.
Okay, thank you.
Was that everything, Mrs. Hunley?
Yes.
Any, anyone else? Okay, I think that's it.
I believe Miss Ewing is on for the next one.
She's on the hook for the next one too, alright, review budget transfer request for special education services.
This agenda item is a request for a budget transfer from salaries and benefits to contracted services within the attendance and health services function in the amount of nine hundred thousand. Due to continued staffing vacancies within special education, we have contracted with various vendors to provide related services to the school division. Currently, we are utilizing contracted individuals to cover seven speech-language pathologist positions, a half-time occupational therapist, and one psychologist position. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? No? Okay, no questions. Five point zero three, review calendar recommendation for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Kiefer is going to present the calendar committee recommendations for this year, thank you, Dr. Kiefer.
Thanks, Dr. Heron, good evening, board members. Pleasure to be with you this evening to present the recommendations from the committee, I believe in the board docs folder. You have information to include the presentation and a draft version of the twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar. Want to start the conversation this evening by thanking the broad cross-section of stakeholders who participated in the process. You may recall that over the last couple of years, we have used the engage with us feature on our website to encourage participation. Every single person who responded to that was included on the committee as a part of the, the whole, and we felt good about that process. In addition, we invited the PTA Council President, teachers from each of the various levels, school administrators from each level, central office team members, and then Mr. Riffle served as your representative on, on the committee. We're grateful for their time. The committee in discussing the key points for the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar had general consensus around the topics that I'm presenting to you this evening. There was some discussion around the hundred and eighty instructional day requirement. There are two specific pieces of state code that talk about instructional days, there's a hundred and eighty instructional days and nine hundred and ninety clock hours. Our school division has consistently gone with a hundred and eighty school days, instructional days. And we aligned the draft calendar that you see this evening to that. There is a desire generally to remain in alignment with our regional school divisions for key dates. Most specifically, that is around the spring break holiday and generally around the winter holiday. Part of the, the challenge that sometimes we find when we are working in our school division and thinking about other school divisions is that we all have students that participate in the New Horizons program. And the New Horizons calendar is generally based on the calendar in Newport News. And we try as a region to, to maintain key alignment of dates, doesn't always work, but we, we are diligent in our efforts to have those conversations. The group talked about strategic placement of opportunities for teacher collaboration and learning and planning throughout the school year. There was a desire from the committee to maintain and quite frankly expand the pre-labor day start. From our previous years, we've started the Monday preceding Labor Day, that's the draft version that you will see for twenty-five, twenty-six. Many members of the committee were interested in starting the school year earlier than that. And pressed in terms of the committee, committee process to have approved calendars for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight done sooner. Again, conversation around ample break for the winter holiday, in fact, I think it was two years ago, this board requested specific survey questions of our community around the holiday break. Is it, is it nine days, is it ten days, is it three weekends?
It wasn't this board.
There, at least one member perhaps?
Yeah, it was the board, but it wasn't this board.
Board collective, yes ma'am. Nevertheless, the data came back and, and the, the board was, I think, interested to note that generally two weeks, two full weeks is what folks appreciate for the winter holiday. And then finally, the, I think the key is that it is challenging to please everyone in the calendar development process. One of the tasks that I asked the committee members to do is to take a calendar with dates plotted out. Take a calendar with dates plotted out and to build out an academic calendar, taking into some things into consideration. And interestingly, almost everybody on the committee brought back a slightly different version based on what their preferences were. To that end, we are recommending a school year starting on August twenty-fifth for twenty-five, twenty-six. We are suggesting that the family conference CLP days move from what we have done this year with a Monday and Tuesday, to a Tuesday and Wednesday in that particular week. November the fourth in twenty-twenty-five is an election day, we have been consistently asked by the electoral group to not have students in school on election day. That makes sense, I think they've been securing ones.
You're sounding like a robot.
You should see how I dance, Mr.
Start all over again? Yeah.
I'll be happy to answer any questions. Testing, how about now?
Yep, that's good.
Great, so November fourth and fifth are Tuesday and Wednesday, we're recommending that in terms of the calendar based on the need to be out of school on election day. And the committee felt like that, that based on some of the calendar modifications we had made in the twenty-four, twenty-five year with respect to added CLP days at the elementary level. That we had perhaps unwittingly tapped too many Mondays where students were missing time in their centers. And there was a preference for us to look at that a little differently as we talked about twenty-five and twenty-six. Thanksgiving break for this three days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, which has been a consistent feature of Williamsburg James City County academic calendars. Two full weeks at winter break, December twenty-second through Jan. two, and then the April spring vacation, the sixth through the tenth, in alignment with the rest of our regional counterparts. Concluding the school year on Wednesday, June tenth. That particular calendar incorporates one hundred and eighty instructional days. For additional context, I just wanted to show you the calendar laid out either on the slide or in your board docs presentation. So that you could get a sense of where some of the various days fell. So, this would be considered the first semester? Or the fall semester? This would be considered the spring semester? Initially, we have done some look at marking periods over the course of twenty-five, twenty-six. It appears based on where we have inserted various CLP days, and this was affirmed by the committee. The idea that if we could have some type of student holiday at the close of marking periods, that would be preferred in terms of grade collection and posting. This is generally the way the marking periods would line up, we have a little bit more work to do there, you'd note ninety-two days in the first semester and eighty-eight days in the second semester. I did want to mention that the committee is very interested in looking at an, an earlier start in twenty-six, twenty-seven. And has requested the opportunity to get feedback from regional school divisions with preferences therein. And actually asked for us to come back to the board in early January with recommended calendars for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. There is a desire from the committee, and I think some members of our community, to have academic calendars two years out to be able to plan accordingly. And what I shared with the committee and pledged to the board is to do some regional canvassing, we actually have a regional meeting set up for next week. To talk about what our region is thinking about for not only twenty-five, twenty-six, but the out-years. And then come back to the board with recommendations for the following two academic years. As an example, if we were to start on Wednesday, the nineteenth of twenty-twenty-six, based on the hundred and eighty-day calendar, the school year would run through June four. And then if you wanted to, to really look at twenty-seven, twenty-eight, starting on the eighteenth of August, concluding on June the second. Relative to this academic calendar that we're presenting this evening, we will be opening an opportunity for broad feedback from stakeholders as early as tomorrow morning, if not tonight. Where we are asking for perspectives on the twenty-five, twenty-six draft calendar. Over the course of the next weekend, we would synthesize that feedback, provide it for you at your next meeting on October fifteenth, and ask you to take action on the calendar then. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer, Mrs. Hunley.
I'm thinking all the way to graduation, when do we find out when graduation is, because I notice if we're done on the tenth, I can't remember, do we graduate them on that Friday or will we do that on, I can't remember.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for the question, we are very close to being comfortable with announcing a twenty-five graduation date. We are not as comfortable announcing a twenty-six graduation date. We have, in some ways, been at the mercy of the college as we try to be at Kaplan with respect to their schedule and our ability to move with their schedule, as well as York County. York County has four high schools that like to take advantage of the Kaplan Arena, and there are some specific requirements that they have. They being that school division with respect to four graduations in a day not being supported by William &amp; Mary. So, first order of business for us is to hopefully be able to announce a graduation date for twenty-five soon. I think we're really, really close, don't want to say it out loud, but then we would turn our attention to twenty-six.
Mr. Riffle?
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer, and I just want to say, my guy, Dr. Kiefer, and the committee cooked up a great calendar, and I will take as much public heat as I can for this. I think it really did take a lot to kind of get together, it's a big puzzle. Me and Ms. Walls did do the exercise, and we both did not have the same calendar, but she served fun with me. But I think Ms. Walls is better than mine, I suggested the earlier start date, I think that Wednesday gives us a free kind of holidays with the state code, there's a lot of stuff that kind of goes in that. I would suggest any board member to me look at that section, maybe kind of think about this as we get feedback, because it is kind of tricky to kind of figure out. You know, there's, let's look at the May part of the calendar, here there's seven weeks that are like without a break for our staff, there is a student holiday. But that's a lot for her to put on her staff, but there's a large part of the year where we do testing and stuff, but it's hard to kind of put a holiday there when there's not many adults to give, so I think that's really the other part of it, so. I think we did a good job, I'm excited to hear what people have to say. I think we did a good job. I'm excited to hear what people have to say because I know there's a lot of opinions out there about the calendar, but I think the outlook of the committee to look towards the future, other drafting, future calendars helps us kind of understand this window a little better. Yeah, I'll happy to serve on again, but I think it'd be great if someone else did, you know, see how it goes. Because it is good stuff. I think it is an exercise. I think you think it's, oh, it's just, you know, I do this all the time. It's not like that at all because there's a lot of laws that involve this and and then they'll hold the bait between a hundred and eighty days and the hours because some of our neighbors don't do this a hundred and eighty days, and it's kind of hard to kind of do that comparison. So Dr. Kever, thank you to your team and the committee members. It's been, it's been fun to serve on the illustrious committee, so.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Mrs. Donner?
I was curious, was there any feedback? Because I'm looking September and October. It's like eight-week stretch and there's no break in October where I think we've had some. So I was just curious about that.
We talked about that as a a group. The initial draft that I provided to the committee did have the CLP day at the end of September, early October. There was a sense that the the group preferred, generally, the teacher group preferred that day to be in the spring of the year vice the fall of the year, especially since there are two days there in November. So I I don't disagree that it's a longer haul than we've had without some some type of break. But the the calendar group felt like it would be more effectively utilized in April. We traded the day out.
Can you tell the listening audience what CLP stands for?
Collaboration, Collaboration Learning and Planning.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have a question. I think you mentioned when it was the the slide with the marking periods and the different quarters. You mentioned that there was, you were trying to co- coordinate a day off at the end of each marking period. Is that for K through twelve? And is that, would that answer some of the calls we've heard for elementary getting a day off for report cards?
Not exactly. So for instance, in this particular breakdown, somewhere in the end of October would be the close of the marking period, and then the CLP workdays would be the fourth and the fifth in order to have grade closeout. There is a day at the end of the first semester in January. There is a early dismissal day likely right before spring break. And then there's not necessarily, there's usually a day closeout in the teacher contract at the back end of the year in June. So so part of the challenge is related to the the placement of those days during the course of the academic year and how that lays out with where we start the year and then the number of contractual days that we ask teachers to be accountable for. Hundred and eighty instructional days. There are a hundred and ninety-three teacher contract days and then ten holidays for teachers. So it's a two-hundred-and-three-day contract. One of the things that we did share with the committee is that as we begin to look at the teacher contract day placement, depending upon how many days do you come back to school before the first instructional day? Do you do seven? Do you do five? That provides some additional flexibility throughout the year. That's something that we would engage teachers in conversation around.
So a teacher could choose? Is that what you're saying?
No, not necessarily. I think need to be a little careful with that, but that we would ask and engage teachers in dialogue around where are these days most appropriately placed as we are putting that teacher calendar together?
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Looks like we're good for now.
Thank you. We'll be back on the fifteenth.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item six point zero one, FY twenty-six, Ten Year Capital Improvement Plan Committee Recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Snipes has been leading the Capital Improvement Plan Committee and will bring those high-level recommendations of projects for the incoming plan. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. We usually start the capital improvement plan off by saying, may the roof never fall in and the friends underneath never fall out. That's an old Irish saying, so I would attribute that to Dr. Heron. But this evening, we will be presenting to you the recommendations of the Capital Improvement Plan Committee and provide a preliminary look at the catalyst for those needs. The administration will continue to evaluate and fine-tune the projects and alignment of the projects in preparation for presentation for the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan in November. It is important to note that while we continue to be good stewards of the taxpayer money, we must plan for necessary repairs and improvements to facilities. Neglecting our buildings and failures to plan for the future could result in emergency cost or larger investments in the long run. The information presented tonight presents that of a working document that will evolve evolve until the school board's approval in December and possibly even until the final adoption in May. The process began in spring to ensure adequate time prior to the operating budget development to focus on the capital improvement plan. Principals were asked to submit requests for facilities improvements in spring and operations was asked to provide information on division-wide projects and routine maintenance schedules as well. The committee then reviewed and evaluated their request to determine whether projects met the criteria to go to go forward as a capital improvement project. Wanted to thank our committee members' contributions and commitment to this year's CIP process. Their recommendations and suggestions were creative, pragmatic, and useful. The projects were vetted, thoroughly ensuring decisions about need, placement, rank, and priority were unbiased. In particular, we had principals from each level. I would like to thank Chantel Cook from Jamestown, Tracy Scott from Toronto, Mike Hurley from Claroberg Baker. We also had three community members, Randy Casey Rutland from Town Management, Bill Evers, who is retired, he's retired and currently serving on the Colonial Heritage Facilities Committee, and Michael Willen, who is a CAC committee member. We also, the committee also included the supervisor of facilities and capital projects, myself, the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary and Secondary Leadership, our Chief Financial Officer, and our Deputy Superintendent. The committee met on separate occasions in August and September. Information provided to the committee included enrollment projections as compared to building capacities. Information was from a year ago is updated enrollment projections are not available until later this month. Project requests received from schools. Current school board adopted capital improvement plan for the fiscal years twenty-twenty-five through twenty-thirty-four. As funding is appropriated annually, tonight, our initial focus is on fiscal year twenty-six. We will review the changes for fiscal year twenty-six from the adopted fiscal year twenty-five five-year plan. And we will also review modifications to the current plan that may have arisen from need or changes. As a reminder, we also have refurbishment and replacement cycles for our school division which place certain materials and certain investments at critical points. Sometimes these meet warranty, but many other times they're based on industry standard for useful life. The proposed FY twenty-six projects are listed on the screen. Claroberg Baker, Bus Canopy. At DJ Montague, where we'll be repainting the interior and replacing carpet and a road entrance widening. Motoka, we are replacing the air-cooled chillers as well as HVAC construction. At Matthew Whaley, the auditorium refurbishment, replacing the gym HVAC and replacing windows. At Stone House, we are installing some paved playground space. And at James Blair, we are installing a running track. At Toronto, we're replacing a generator, replacing some roof skylights, and installing a running track. At Blatton, we are also repainting interior and replacing carpet. At Laurel Lane, you will, and and other places on here you will see in yellow, these items were removed from the fiscal year twenty-five final adopted CIP and are being placed back into the FY twenty-six based on the committee's recommendations. At Laurel Lane, the walk-in freezer and, excuse me, we are replacing the pitched asphalt roof. At Norwich, we're installing a walk-in freezer. And at Berkeley, we are doing a partial replacement on the kitchen and cafeteria roof and the orchestra and the music area. A gym refurbishment, a walk-in freezer, and a running track. At Hornsby, we are also repainting the interior and replacing carpet and installing a running track. And at Cooley Field, we are turfing the field, providing AstroTurf. Our division projects continue to be parking lots, playground equipment, school bus replacement, storm drain repairs, and safety and security equipment. CIP, our generator and as mentioned earlier, an entrance widening at DJ. Stone House, a generator. At Blatton, a gym refurbishment. At Hornsby, an auditorial refurbishment and a gym refurbishment in FY thirty-five. In FY thirty-five, an auditorial refurbishment and a gym refurbishment at War Hill. And the, and playground upgrades, which you will hear about later, and hard surface playground upgrades per the VDOE guidelines. Unlike in previous years, this year was unique in that the committee didn't have additions to the program resulting from newer proposed or instructional needs. This year, many of our projects are based on the refurbishment and recycle schedules. However, the committee did focus on, like I said, improving playground space to make them more inclusive, ensuring that hard surface playground in elementary's cafeteria space were in alignment with VDOE guidelines. So picture is worth a thousand words. So at DJ Montague, we are talking about installing some hard surface playground space. This was because what we, when we found, when we looked at our, the guidelines based on VDOE, DJ Montague and other elementary schools didn't have the recommended hard surface playground space from the guidelines. At DJ Montague, we've also looked at the entrance widening. Anyone that goes there in the morning understands or in the afternoon understands how traffic backs up. Widening the entrance will allow for buses to exit and cars to enter more efficiently. Hard surface playgrounds at Laurel Lane and Matthew Whaley were also recommended based on VDOE guidelines.
What's a hard surface playground?
So, back this up. So, okay, you see Matthew Whaley is on your right. The playground, the hard surface is in, is right behind the school. It has some basketball courts on it. That's a hard surface playground. So, per VDOE standard, per the number of students, they should have about twenty-four thousand square feet. And some of them are, only have fourteen thousand or eighteen thousand square feet.
Mr. Snipes, and the material of that surface is asphalt?
Asphalt.
Yep.
So, so we're, sorry, we ask every time you change it. So, so we're just adding an orange square of asphalt? Is that what that is?
We're just, you're you're adding enough square, you're adding enough asphalt for to meet the VDOE guidelines for square footage. So that may not be the location, but I just wanted to put on the screen where it could possibly go.
And then they'll paint lines and stuff on it to look like, yeah.
Four square and all that.
Four square, yeah.
Four square hopscotch. Grew up in my neighborhood, hopscotch.
Exactly, come on.
Playgrounds are a space for kids to release energy during the school day, socialize with classmates, and explore the world around them. Traditional playground equipment tends to limit kids with different abilities from playing collaboratively. WJCC intends to create inclusive playground environments at schools to ensure all students get the chance to benefit from unstructured play. In a safe space designed to promote play among children of differing abilities, ages, and communities. We intend to give all children the same platform to play while breaking down barriers both physically and socially. Our playgrounds will be designed or updated to include a better travel path to the playground, inclusive and modified playground equipment, access and maneuverability to the playground equipment, points of interactions for students, fencing, and adult seating. On this slide and those to follow, you'll see items recommended for the fiscal year twenty-six, including the projects removed by the county from the fiscal year twenty-five CIP. Costs are subject to change based on the final estimates from architects. We've gone over many of these before, but I wanted to put them in a format in which it may be easier to see them by school. Our next steps in the process include an opportunity for public comments on October fifteenth, followed by the presentation of the superintendent's proposed CIP on November the twelfth. And available to answer any questions.
Mrs. Henley?
So I have to ask this. The running tracks at all the middle schools, is that our answer for recess for the children? Is it going to be like lunchtime, go run like the wind?
Well, one of the things that the committee looked at was the size of the track. And the cost of asphalt now has risen, so it may not be the size of an actual running track like at a high school, but we're we're proposing a surface that kids can at least get to walk around where it's not, can get wet or muddy or, you know, they have a place that they can at least walk.
Okay. And I have one more question. Most of the playgrounds, are they open to anybody that lives in the neighborhoods to use? And and so who, if things get damaged, is that our responsibility?
Yes, that is still our responsibility, our responsibility. The principal or the school will present a work, present a work order, and then our staff will go out and repair.
Thank you.
Mr. Riffle?
Thank you for the presentation. I just want to mention, maybe the viewing public may have this question. None of the high schools are listed. Could you talk about why the high schools aren't listed? It's 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 just within the tenure outlook, right? Like it's high schools aren't listed for any capital improvements, but they will be in the future.
Well, some sometimes in fiscal years twenty-seven through thirty-four, there are high school improvements. But in, since we're focused on fiscal year twenty-six, that's what this presentation is on.
Thank you.
And I'm sure in the next presentation, you'll be a, see where all the projects are listed.
Yeah. Mr. Riffle, that'll put everything in place in the next presentation, plus the money associated with each of the projects as well when Ms. Ewen presents the final capital for the plan.
I don't want people to get nervous, that's what I'm saying. Like, there's a plan for them. It's out there. Thank you.
Right, yeah, that was going to be my question. What is, what is the cost associated with all of this or, you know, proposed cost?
We've asked, we've asked an architect to give us updated cost proposals, and we're verifying those to make sure that we are in line with what traditional estimates are.
Okay.
And as a matter of course, we we reestimate coming up to the year in which it's going to actually be funded by the locality. So we revamp and go back and check estimates before we put them into the plan. But of course, they can also change over the course of the the year.
So, so the public hearing then, which is our next meeting, will that be bef- before there's any cost associated with anything?
That's correct. It's just a an opportunity for the public to speak to any of the projects or any needs, or it could be general cost as well. But they won't have that information until we formally present the the CIP.
Okay. All right. Doesn't look like there are any more questions, so. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. All right, item six point zero two, Language Instruction Educational Program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Marie Nice, our coordinator for English as a Second Language, or I should say, our Language Instruction Educational Program, will present information on this program tonight. This is one of the first of several presentations that the board will be receiving on program, on programs, but also the costs associated with those and potential positions in the next fiscal budget cycle as well. So, Ms. Nice, welcome. And this is your first presentation to the board, I believe, newly appointed. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. This afternoon, I'm presenting information on the Language Instruction Educational Program LEAP. The Language Instruction Educational Program, formerly known as ESL, is a federally mandated program that supports students in grades K through twelve who are learning English as an additional language. The primary goals of the program are language acquisition, academic success, and cultural integration. There are several laws that guide our work. The Equal Educational Opportunities Act mandates that schools provide equal access to education for all students, including English learners. Every Student Succeeds Act plays a crucial role in supporting English learners by emphasizing their right to equitable educational opportunities. Under ESSA, states are required to develop comprehensive plans that address the unique needs of English learners, including specific language development goals and assessment. The Code of Virginia, Code twenty-two point one, includes provisions related to English learner education. This slide illustrates the timeline of the enrollment process for English learners. First, families enroll. If the families need assistance with completing the enrollment process, we have personnel available to help. Next, the parent-family engagement liaison, language instruction educational program teacher, and/or counseling team meet with the family to conduct a formal interview to gauge And or counseling team meet with the family to conduct a formal interview to gauge the type of supports they may need. The student is then screened for language services and based on the screener results, the student is now considered an English learner. A language instruction model and class schedule are assigned and then the student is placed in class. Language Instruction Educational Program teachers work closely with the registrars, administrative teams and school counseling teams. To ensure that students feel welcome and classroom teachers receiving English learners become aware of their enrollment and language abilities. Classroom teachers and language instruction educational program teacher work together to create the language instruction educational plan. English learners' language and academic progress are monitored quarterly through the elevation platform. During the registration process, all families complete a primary home language survey. The results of the home language survey determines the need for English language proficiency screening. A need is determined, the language instruction educational program teacher screens the student to assess their language proficiency level. Students who are administered the screener and receive a score between one and four are eligible for language services. As you can see from the chart, as you move up in levels, the more advanced your English proficiency. The screener score helps to identify students' language needs, instructional model and the number of service minutes. The Virginia Department of Education provides guidance and requirements on instructional models for our English learners. The program models we currently have in place here in WJCC meet those requirements. The sheltered instruction model is an educational approach designed to make content accessible. For all learners while specifically meeting the needs of English learners. It integrates language and content instruction while promoting interaction and engagement for all learners. Classroom teachers receive training on applying sheltered instruction strategies like building background knowledge. Using visual aids and creating language objectives. For many of our English learners, in addition to sheltered instruction, they receive in-class support. In this model, their language services are provided directly in the classroom in collaboration between the classroom teacher. And the language instruction educational program teacher. The number of service minutes is based on the student's language level. Our beginning level students are in a pullout or resource class taught by one of our talented. Language Instruction Educational Program teachers and are provided a more direct intensive approach to their English language learning. Administered annually to all English learners between the months of January and March is a language assessment called ACCESS. All English learners, levels one through four point three in the state of Virginia are required to take this assessment. The language assessment measures English learner's skills in listening, speaking, reading and writing. Students who achieve a score of four point four or higher on the ACCESS assessment. Exit services and become a monitor student or a former English learner and are monitored for four years. Research shows that it takes on an average, a student who begins at a level one, four to seven years. To progress through the levels and meet the criteria for exiting services. Our students fall into that same average of progress. Students with two consecutive years of access data are eligible for progress review. Based on the state's calculations, fifty percent of eligible English learners have demonstrated progress. This chart shows the distribution of English learners across English language proficiency levels. Levels one through four point three and monitor students along with their grade spans. Notably, level one and level three students comprise the highest groups across all grade levels. At the elementary level, we see a significant number of level one students indicating many newcomers. Who are just beginning to develop their English skills. Conversely, the presence of a substantial level three group at this stage indicates that some students are progressing well. And may require advanced learning opportunities. As students transition to middle and high school, the trends continue. With level three students maintaining strong representation, highlighting effective language acquisition programs. This bar graph illustrates the year-to-year change in language instruction educational program enrollment. Showing a steady increase over the past four years. The growing percentage of total WJCC student enrollment represented by English learners. Indicates a significant shift in our student demographics. As more students from diverse linguistic backgrounds enroll in our schools. The proportion of English learners within the total student population has increased. This chart represents the distribution of primary languages spoken by English learners. With Spanish representing the most significant share at seventy five point five percent. Our diverse community of English learners represent eighty four countries. Reflecting a rich tapestry of cultures, languages and experiences. This global participation not only enhances our learning environment. But also fosters cross-cultural understanding and collaboration among students from around the world. Here are just a few highlights from our program. The International Club at Lafayette High School serves as a vibrant space for students from various backgrounds to connect. Celebrate their culture and engage in meaningful activities. We have implemented targeted tutoring programs that provide additional support to English learners. Parent academies provide resources and workshops for families, equipping them with the tools to support their child's education. The Language Instruction Educational Program Awards Ceremony celebrates the achievements of our English learners. Recognizing their hard work and progress. Our summer programs offer enriching activities focused on language development and social engagement. These highlights demonstrate our commitment to creating a robust and inclusive language program. That supports the diverse needs of our students. Ongoing professional development for all educators is a top priority. All teachers in WJCC participated in an annual training this year that concentrated on sheltered instruction strategies. Support for newcomers and technology tools to address, to address the diverse needs of English learners. This past August marked the fourth consecutive year they have engaged in training specifically for teaching English learners. At the end of the training sessions, participants completed a survey to rank their preferences for topics. They wish to explore further related to English learners. The results of this survey help inform our future training programs. In addition, we offer professional development opportunities on the elevation platform. Language software programs like Imagine Learning, specialized trainings to meet the needs of individual school-based teams. As well as our paraprofessionals. We also make staff aware of professional learning opportunities through VDOE. And the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment Consortium, WEDA. Collaborations with community organizations such as Literacy for Life, the Williamsburg Regional Library. And William and Mary strengthen the support available for our English learners and their families. Our Language Instruction Educational Program teachers are the foundation of our program. This chart depicts the number of teachers allocated based on the numbers of student enrollment. With the exception of this year, the Language Instruction Educational Program was staffed. Based on the Virginia Department of Education's guidance, one to fifty. So that would mean for every fifty students, every one teacher allocated. In May of twenty twenty four, the Virginia General Assembly approved the new staffing model, which is now based on need. Therefore, in anticipation of this new guidance, WJCC hired three additional. Language Instruction Educational Program teachers. Currently, we are allocated at twenty five language instruction educational program teachers. Within this new model set to take effect next school year, we will require thirty one teachers. Based on our current enrollment numbers, representing a total increase of nine staff positions for the upcoming budget planning. It is likely, based on the increase of enrollment over the past four years. That our enrollment numbers will increase by the end of the school year. As I conclude this presentation, I want to leave you with two inspiring stories that truly capture the heart of our mission. First, this is a picture of one of our seniors from last year. Not only did he graduate from high school, but he also earned his veterinary assistant certification. From New Horizon Regional Educational Center, all within just three years and starting with very limited English. When he received the news that he had passed a certification test, the joy was overwhelming. In a moment filled with tears and happiness, he gathered his teachers and friends around him. And called his grandfather in El Salvador, who is a veterinarian. Can you imagine the pride and joy in that call? He did it. He achieved his goal. This is Annie. She just graduated from kindergarten and her journey is a testament to the bright future we can create together. Annie speaks Spanish fluently and is just beginning to learn English. By the end of the school year last year, she met all benchmarks for pals, coming close to a perfect score. She has shown remarkable growth with learning sixty five new vocabulary words and can identify twenty two letters of the alphabet. Annie is not just a student, but she represents the potential of our program and the promise of a wonderfully diverse school division. I can't wait to see all that she will accomplish. Her success, as well as the success of our graduate, is a reminder of why we do what we do. And together, we can help every child reach their dreams. Thank you for your time today and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nice. Any questions from board members? This was a much anticipated presentation, so are there? Any comments or questions, Mr. Riffle?
Thank you, Ms. Nice. Um, this is, it's always great to learn more about the programs and what's in our division and are required by the state and the federal government. I wanted to go back to the General Assembly talking about the need-based model and how that may, may move into accreditation into the next year. And may potentially funding. Um, there's a lot going on in the state. Uh, it's maybe not really a question to you, but something maybe to talk about and maybe get more insight from yourself. I believe the General Assembly will move towards this model um before twenty thirty for almost all instructional positions. Um, because it's, it's, it's a need from across the Commonwealth, not just in ELL or in the space. Um, and, and it will come with funding in, in that position. So I think our, our division typically takes strides to be ahead of stuff that's a part of our. Requirements from the state and the federal government, so which is why we see our increase coming with nine positions. So I think it's a great move from our team and I, I'm commending the efforts there. Actually, we'd like to maybe hear a bit more. I know we have Ms. Witt here from, who actually does this occupation. I just think it's important for us, maybe to talk about like how it goes day to day. And I don't want to put her on the spot, but I slept too tight with Ms. Witt and it was amazing to kind of see kind of the work that she does and. And the efforts that are put, this type of learning in our division.
Sure, sure. So, um, so are you specifically asking how to go through a school day, how our students are?
Because like, I mean, we think about this, we just heard eighty four countries are represented, right? And it's like, we all thought, yeah, or the general thought, some percent of it is Spanish, but like, Ms. Witt and I dealt with. Multiple students who didn't speak Spanish or didn't speak English, right? So it was an interesting dynamic to be a part of a class and, and I specifically was trying to get into a class where I could see this type of dynamic happen. To understand this is like how it goes from policy to implementation, because that is something that none of us in this room really see every day. We just talk about, um, so, which I don't know how to actually give Ms. Witt to talk about, but I think it's just.
Was it a question? Are you just talking, are you?
I am just speaking generally. I, I do, I don't know if Ms. Witt has anything to say about this, that'd be great to hear from her, but I don't know if Ms. Witt has anything to say about this, that'd be great to hear from her. But I think it's something to commend, uh, our division to take, because it is strideful to do this type of stuff. And we actually, looking at the accreditation model, our division won't be behind as much as some of our neighbors in this type of work. Because it is something you have to put as a priority if you want to get it right and we have been doing that, so.
Mr. Riffle, I could just jump in and if anyone wants the opportunity to go into a classroom to see some of the work being done. We would love to, to organize that for any board member who'd like to do that.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Henley?
Just have a clarifying question, so. Do we ever have, like, if we, what are the qualifications for the ELL teachers? So if we have teachers now in our division that might want to go, since we have nine vacancies. It seems easier to hire nine teachers rather than nine ELL teachers. Is there a way to transition that or is that a whole nother qualification level?
So, right, it's, then that's a really good question, so thank you. Um, so a teacher who has a, a teaching license can simply go and pass the praxis for ESL. And at that point, if they pass the praxis, then they can apply to be, um, and language instruction educational program teacher. So it's passing the praxis. Um, and a lot of our, um, hiring lately has been by word of mouth. Because our teachers are so excited and invigorated about what they do and they're passionate about what they do. So they want all their friends to come on board and, and it's, it's a great place to be, come teach. So a lot of word of mouth, um, but again, they would just need to pass the praxis.
What else from board members? Anything, I, um, I have two questions. Well, the first one, maybe it's more just, um. Just sort of making a comment on one of the slides, the slides of the year-to-year change in LEAP enrollment. It, it does appear that from twenty three, twenty four to twenty four, twenty five, we actually have. That's a, a larger jump than we've had from eighteen to twenty one. So, so we, they have a significant influx this year in particular?
Yes, so we've seen a steady increase in probably the ba- the past four years, um, steadily. Steadily, so you know, we were at seven point eight percent and now we've jumped to about nine percent. And it's still just October first, so this is what our numbers look like as of today. So we are continuing to see, see a climb and see a steady increase.
So what does that do to the caseload for, for the current LEAP teachers? Is that how we refer to them? What does that do to their caseload?
Well, it will increase their caseload, but we have actually, um, gotten very creative. Of course, we stay within our instructional model that is, uh, recommended by the state. But our caseloads by our teachers do increase, so that's why it's really important that we continue the staff development with the teachers. So we can work with them on, we continue to work with them on sheltered instruction strategies and so that they know. How to work with the students in the classroom and then the language instruction educational program teacher will continue to provide that support.
So you're saying we're relying more heavily on classroom teachers?
Um, not relying more heavily on classroom teachers, the, um, students, the English learners that come in. They are, um, given their service minutes based on their language level. So then the, what happens is the language instruction educational program teachers create their schedules based on their service models. And the second tier is, so you've got children instruction, so we're working on children instruction for all teachers. But then we have the second tier where they, teachers actually go in. The language instruction educational program teachers go into the classroom and collaborate and work with the content teacher. So you're going to be seeing more of that. And then at the, at the lower end, that's a pullout or that resource class. That where our level ones are and those are pullouts. So there'll be more opportu- the more students we have, will be more opportunity for the language instruction educational program teachers. To collaborate directly in the classroom with the, with the classroom teachers.
And, and each, it's individualized, right? It's each essentially, right? So it's not, you can't really say, on average, how mu- what the ratio is, um, between. Leap, the LEAP teacher's involvement in any one particular student versus other content teachers. It really, it just depends on the individual.
It does depend on the individual and it depends on their language instruction educational plan. That's cons- that's similar to an IEP. And the language instruction educational plan is crafted in collaboration with the content teacher, classroom teacher. And also the language instruction educational program teacher. And together, they come up with a plan to what type of services, type of program model. And service minutes, so that they collaborate and so that they're both, the classroom teacher knows what modifications to provide in the classroom. Based on that language instruction educational program plan. based on that Language Instruction Educational Program plan. But it's in collaboration.
I, I have a few more, but I'll, I'll let other people jump in. Mrs. Hunley?
So, I guess this could be an SBQ also. How do we fare to other local neighboring divisions? Is this, uh, are these numbers, um, comparable to other divisions? Or are we, or is there word of mouth like, go to Williamsburg, they're doing an awesome job with their ELL program, everybody move there. I'm just trying to get a feel for, is it because people are moving here because we have such an excellent program? Or is this across, uh, uh, most divisions?
So from what I'm seeing and hearing, yes, there's an increase, uh, around the state. Um, our growth of enrollment has several reasons. Uh, migrations, so families are relocating to our area. There are opportunities for a better quality of life. Um, employment opportunities, um, are one reason, and then also any relatives or family living in the area. But we are seeing, um, a growth around, around the state. This is, everybody is seeing that increase.
Correct me if I'm going wrong, because I don't really have a background in education. But apparently the State Board of Education changed, um, their number of semesters of exemption for English learners from eleven to three. That seems to be a very draconian move, and I was wondering how we're gonna adapt to that.
I think it's gonna be very challenging, because it was eleven months and there was more time to, as a first student, to assimilate into the system and begin to learn English and be successful. It's going to lead to a different level of support. Don't know if you want to add something to that?
I'm sorry. Um, I think we're also, you know, information coming from the state is coming out slowly. So, um, as they continue to, um, unfold more information and provide more training, um, we're gonna learn and know more.
So, but it's not gonna jeopardize our accreditation?
We don't know the impact right now. We do, do know that from the outcomes we sent to you just recently, our students have been very successful in, in, in the accreditation system and, and generally in, in learning. I do think it will have a difference, make a difference. The reason the state went to that is that is the federal role. And they were combining the federal and the state's systems and trying to unite the two. And even though superintendents really advocated to keep the eleven months, because that was one of the things we were most concerned about, they, the state has moved ahead with the, the three-month system. Because we are concerned about the assimilation of students in three months.
There's new change in accreditation. Does that bring, bring us more money?
We don't know. Well, we do know that there's, the SOQ has changed and now it's based on needs. So that should bring, with more students, it should bring more resources. But we all know sitting around the table that we don't get all of those locally. There's a thirty percent from the state and a seventy local, seventy percent locally. So yes, there'll be more money, but there still will be, uh, uh, more, more required of the locality as well to meet the need.
It just seemed like going from eleven to three is really, really a big move.
It's very concerning. We're, we're equally concerned about it, and we haven't seen what impact it will actually have yet. But we, as, as superintendents, we spoke out very clearly against that being implemented in the state system, because we felt it wasn't a good thing to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, Ms. Chen and I attended the, for the VSB policy committee, and they, they also talked about this. Is the VSB also heavily advocated against the change because of implementation and the state not yet having funding mechanisms for what they're requiring. Um, so I would say this is not only coming out slowly, but it's somewhat rushed in the way that they're presenting us with somewhat problems, you know, at the solution. So, um, I think it's really gonna be kind of us and to, to kind of be diligent about what we advocate for as we move into the next couple sessions with the General Assembly, so.
We're in the year when a new accreditation system, accountability system is now moving forward. And we still, we're still waiting to understand what that means like when we look at this year's data in the new system. We've got some information, we don't have it all. And I think that will determine how we change an approach and try to allocate resources depending on what that looks like. But we're, the, the plane is literally built and flying and we're, we're on catch-up right now. We know what it generally looks like. We don't know what our data looks like in the new system completely. And as soon as we have all of that together, we'll present to the board and get you a sense of what it's gonna look like. Because our principals really need to understand that at every school as well.
That's a big move.
It's a huge move.
Mrs. Donner?
You may have already addressed this. So, um, so if I'm looking, so we have twenty-five teachers and so we need thirty-one for next year in the budget. So that's, I guess, something we'll be asking for.
Yes, and we already have put three in place at the beginning of this year, but those have to be budgeted in next year's budget. So if Ms. Yuen was to take your typical nine instructional staff and add them to the budget plus benefits, you're talking roughly eight or nine hundred, somewhere in there, Irish math. Always works. So our first ask, out of the gate before anything else, is to fund these positions next year. So we're talking almost a million dollars in our first budget conversation that we must do to, to support our students.
And then just one thing, right, these students are located across our localities. They are not concentrated in one area or another.
Um, generally speaking, yes. Um, I do, we, some of our schools have a higher population of English learners than others. Uh, James Blair, James River, two that come to mind. Any others?
Uh, Matthew Whaley, um, CBP's seeing a little bit of an increase, Lafayette.
So generally, in, in more in pockets than others, and that's when we start to allocate resources, it's gonna be based, based on student needs. So some schools may not have additional resources, because they don't need them in this area and some will.
Oh, Ms. Chen, go ahead.
I had the exact same thought. I was just going to say, as, um, Ms. Donner, but in addition to the budget, we, we can definitely try to build that in, like, that's something we can do. But then in terms of like recruiting and getting those teachers into our division, my understanding is we're currently still short for this school year. And then next year, we're looking at needing an additional, um, seven on top of, you know, two. And I know this past year, Warhild struggled to keep, right, their, their teacher staffed. So I'm wondering two things, just if there, what, what sort of efforts have worked? What can we do to improve that process so that we are able to staff all those positions? You know, we're, we're gonna work very hard to get the funding and then we want to get those people, right?
I think the challenge there, we would want to advertise them today, but we don't have funding today. And, and so as we start to look towards the budget times, we, as soon as we have a budget approved, those will become positions. But I think we're going to have to reach out and offer some early contracts, just like we do with regular teachers. And I know, um, Ms. Nice is already in recruiting mode and reaching out to people and trying to make connections and build those connections across our system and outside of it to invite people to come and join us. I think a lot of it will be word of mouth.
And then I'm just also curious, what happens when we, we don't have a staff member? What happens with those students? Um, because I know that there have been struggles to keep enough staff, um, to service and be able to provide support for our students that are learning English.
Well, currently, um, we are staffed at the states' one to fifty ratio. So we are, we're fine with our staffing. Um, we make sure that our students are served. Uh, we do have a couple of teachers who, um, are transient, so they have a caseload at their home site. And then they may go to another site to be able to help, to support, uh, to make sure that all of our students, um, have a Language Instruction Educational Program teacher and service minutes in those service, uh, service minutes are being, um, delegated to those students.
And then just as a follow-up, do we provide professional development for our regular education teachers? Because I know that in my past experience and also in other divisions, it helps for the general education teacher to also have training. I think a lot of the, I just remember a lot of the professional development that you get to, to support your students that are struggling with language, really work across the board for all students.
Yes, yes, and the answer is yes, definitely. Um, we do the annual, they have annual training. Um, this was the fourth year that they had annual train, training in some of those sheltered instruction strategies. Um, and those, um, that training was actually particularly very successful this year. We had quite a few, a large number of teachers respond in that survey about different areas of, uh, language acquisition that they would like more training in. Um, questions that they had about it. And then we're actually going out and along with, um, the ESL specialist, we are going from school to school, working directly with teachers, working directly with small groups. So the teachers, they receive that annual training, then they receive the support throughout the school year. Then we offer additional professional learning opportunities, um, site-based. So actually, our, um, Language Instruction Educational Program teachers just delivered a professional development across all sixteen schools for their staff. So they're getting that in addition to what they received in August, as well as any opportunities through VDOE or our WIDA, World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. That information is sent out to teachers, so, and we've had, um, really good participation with teachers. They, they want to, to figure out ways to help. And the great thing about what we're teaching them is that sheltered instruction does work for all students. Building background knowledge, creating language objectives, using visuals, putting students in small groups, collaborating. That works for all kids and it specifically meets the needs of our English learners.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that.
Mrs. Hunley? This is my last question. There could be a possibility, if we get the nine, that one school might, could possibly have about five if their needs are high, right? And some other schools have less. That would not be a problem, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It'll literally be driven with the formula and the need of the student.
And I, and I have a comment. It's not necessarily a question, but we're mainly for the board. But when we're looking at the budget for next year, um, and what you've guesstimated that we're gonna have, need thirty-one teachers, that is based on this year's number of students. And if we look at the increase we've had for the past several years, we can increase that one thousand twenty-nine, let's say, to eleven hundred. So that thirty-one teachers will become thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. Um, so just for us to keep in mind when we're figuring out the budget, that's not necessarily the numbers from this year that we need to go off of. We need to contemplate what we're gonna, or estimate what we're gonna have for next year and use that number for the teachers.
Excellent point, yes.
As you're saying, that's very important, because forecasting a little bit ahead is gonna be really important next year. Thank you.
I just have a couple, just sort of going back, follow-up. You mentioned the lowest, the lowest level of English proficiency gets pullout instruction. So does that mean that they are brought into a, either one-on-one or a small group and act and taught English?
Yes.
As a second language?
Yes, so they are pulled out, um, and we work very closely with the schedules of the teachers and to know when to be able to pull them out. And the Language Instruction Educational Program teachers have small groups and they work with them specifically on that targeted direct language instruction. It's very intensive. It's, there's a curriculum that drives it. There's resources available, um, and they get exactly what they need in the, in the amount of time that they need that the, that the state suggests that we give them.
Okay, because I know we've heard from people in the community that, you know, we're not teaching the kid, these kids English. We're just putting them in classrooms and they have to sort of sink or swim, but, but they, but they're not necessarily learning English first and then entering classrooms. But they are getting targeted English instruction simultaneous.
Absolutely, and research shows that that's, that's the way to do it. We want our students to, to learn the English language quickly. We immerse them in the English environment by putting them in the classroom with English-speaking students. And then we pull them out for that direct targeted English language instruction.
Okay, and are there any SOL exemptions for the, the lowest level, or you know, lower level proficiencies? There are?
Yes, so they, they get a, uh, one-time reading exemption. They get a one-time social studies exemption, but they are not exempted from math or science.
Okay. And then my, my last question is, so there, through this, because of this, the way this LEAP program starts that enrollment, there shouldn't be a classroom teacher who receives a non-English speaker with no support. That should not ever happen.
Correct, correct. They, um, will either, they will definitely receive support from the Language Instruction Educational Program teacher. Also, we have built, um, a, a Language Instruction Educational Program SharePoint site with, we're constantly putting resources in there and sharing those resources with teachers so that they have those in addition to that direct support from the language teacher, as well as myself and the ESL specialist.
Okay, and sorry, sorry, one last question. Are there any, um, classroom teachers who, who feel unable to teach their content? Because of this, uh, growing, you know, because of an increase, maybe that was just unforeseen?
Sure, sure, that, that does happen. As a matter of fact, when I alluded to the, um, survey that they did during the professional development, we got a lot of questions about, just nervous, I get a, a newly arrived student, they don't speak English, I know my content, how do I support? That's where we come in and that's where we help and say, look, we're gonna provide you the tools, we're gonna provide you the resources, we're gonna model for you. We're gonna help you. You've got a Language Instruction Educational Program teacher in your building. Look at them as the language experts. If you need help, that's where you go to, but you always have support. Because we want the teachers to feel comfortable and successful and they, you know, and we also want to create a welcoming environment for our students. And I think that if they, they feel comfortable, that they're able to communicate, um, and cover their content, then that just helps the teacher and the students.
And, but in general, in the, in the, with, with the English-speaking students, it, they're still able to deliver their content?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Okay, that was my last question.
Because we do focus, just one quick thing, we do focus heavily with our training on differentiation. And during differentiation, that's when, um, you know, specifically our English learners can get what they need. Our special education students can get what they need. Our higher achieving students can get what they need. And so all needs are met through really working through differentiation.
Thank you very much. Any final questions?
I know math is universal. Does science, is that because it's hands-on?
Math could be language-heavy. It's, uh, I, I, I know, I, you know, I, we actually have just, um, a little kindergartner who is just as bright as you cannot believe, and he knows Spanish like this. And, you know, he's, he can't communicate in English, but he can do so well with his Spanish, so, but it's the, the language barrier. And so some of the math problems and even some of the science technology, I mean, terminology, it's, it's that. And also, it's that academic language. I mean, it takes them maybe two to four years to learn just playground language, basic. But it takes four to seven to get access to academic language. And that academic language is what is the gatekeeper to content. So I, science is heavy in language. Math is, can be language-heavy, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much. That was a very thorough presentation with a, a lot of follow-up questions. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will move on to, um, six point zero three, overview of employee input process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, I'm going to give you, uh, more of an overview of our potential employee input process. And I believe Ms. Wall's going to lead off this evening, and Dr. Keever is here for questions. All the hard questions go this side and the easy ones go this side. I believe that's how it's gonna work.
That sounds great. I like that. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members and Dr. Heron. Thank you for the opportunity to share the planned outline of our fall employee input process. As we built this process, we wanted to offer opportunities where all employees could engage in a two-way dialogue with their job-alike peers. Through facilitated conversation, employees will identify successes, opportunities, and possible solutions related to four discussion topics and surface the opportunity or opportunities of greatest importance to their job category. Engagement opportunities will be offered as outlined here. Times were scheduled to offer flexibility to, and to attendees while also balancing facilitation needs. Each of the seven sessions will unfold similarly. All attendees will gather for a whole group opening to review the purpose of the evening, what we hope to achieve, employee's role in the process, and how results of the conversation will be reported out. Then attendees will transition into breakout groups with their job-alike colleagues. In these smaller sessions, employees will engage in facilitated discussion, ultimately identifying the top opportunities for their job category. Each job-alike group will participate in conversation on four topics. Job satisfaction and responsibilities, resources and support, work environment and culture, communication and decision-making.
Job satisfaction and responsibilities, resources and support, work environment and culture, communication and decision-making. Within each conversation topic, employees will be asked to consider successes within that topic area, opportunities, and possible solutions. Tomorrow, we plan to invite all staff to these opportunities and ask that they RSVP one week before the session they plan to attend. An RSVP is not required, but it is helpful for us to ensure we have adequate support on hand to facilitate the breakout conversations by employee group. We'll also monitor the RSVPs to determine the need for additional follow-up, either to all staff and/or to specific groups, to ensure that they're aware of these opportunities. And as mentioned in last meeting, we plan to report back at the December tenth School Board meeting and then share a summary of the results with all staff later in that week.
It's um, Board members, looking at you. Question, Mrs. Hunley?
All right, that was a lot. So staff members are gonna get an email saying that these are the open dates, right? Just for clarity.
That's right.
And then they submit their topic, or they just, they'll come and just?
They'll come and, they'll come and bring their topic around those four categories. The, the communication tomorrow is threefold, quite frankly. One of the, the key aspects will be around this process and the opportunity for employees to participate. Uh, there will also be information related to the school calendar and an opportunity to give feedback there. And then sharing that in a two-week timeframe, so after the school calendar piece closes, we will be seeking some feedback from staff around the strategic plan. Uh, because we want to have some of those data points potentially to further alter the conversation topics of those four areas. So a staff member arrives, receives an overview briefing from Dr. Heron in terms of the intent for the evening, and then gets into their job-alike category and generates responses to questions in those four categories.
So if I, since I had lots of questions about oh, um, working and then not being compensated, that would be in the responsibilities section. They'll just bring those up. You all take the, the information and then, you're not trying to solve it that day, right? You're, you're gonna just then address?
It is an opportunity to, to raise concerns within a group or grouping of employees and to determine across the, uh, across the assistant principal group if they all share similar concepts with respect to those four categories. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And so the idea is to really train our facilitators in listening and writing things down. We're not, we're not providing any answers, we're just soliciting input from everybody there. That's the purpose, unfiltered.
Got you. Mr. Riffle?
Um, will there be an opportunity for employees that cannot participate in the live sessions to, to be a part of these four topic categories? And I just wanna know if there's, yeah, I, I just don't think you can capture that all in one month, you know? Or even three sessions, you know, just for instructional staff.
Our, our initial thinking right now is we would like to have in-person conversations with employees that, that have issues that they wish to bring forward. I, I think that moving forward past our sharing with the board on December tenth and then sharing with the entire stakeholder group across the school division in terms of staff, there'll be other opportunity for people to participate. I also don't want to capture this as the sole way that people share their thinking. As an example, we want all staff to give us feedback on the calendar and/or on the strategic plan survey that, that will be coming out. So there, there, we feel like there are multiple avenues and venues to share thinking. This one very specifically is designed for people to come together and make meaning with one another.
Thank you. Uh, I'm very appreciative of that section, cause I think that's what I'm trying to develop is like, or understand is like, as a board member and encourage the public, it's like, this is the only chance that these people, our employees have. And there's plenty of times that this has actually happened in the past, right? Like, just, you know, we, we open ourselves up for feedback all the time and now we go, you know, especially the calendar thing. We were talking about this in the calendar committee, it's like, this is the opportunity for the public to, if you're not even a parent of a student, like to talk about blah, blah, blah. Yeah, it, it really does impact a lot about this and this is how government works, so, so thank you. That's all, Dr. Heron.
Absolutely, I'm just gonna reference when Dr. Kever mentioned the strategic plan survey. That's the short surveys we're developing for students, staff, and families that are answering the questions that we want answered in our strategic plan goals, to do with?
Baseline data, right.
Baseline data, to do with, are you safe at school, those kind of things. And so that's what he's referencing in, in the strategic plan. Not about the strategic plan per se, it's, it's answering, it's answering the questions that we want to know in terms of climate, the climate in the buildings.
Uh, Mrs. Hunley?
I'm gonna address the elephant in the room. What's not gonna happen right is that, so I'm trying to envision, there'll be leadership staff there. Nobody's gonna say, call a principal and say, you had this teacher here who said da-da-da-da. Um, and then, cause that's what I'm afraid somebody's gonna say, it's not, I'm gonna get um, retribution for speaking up. So I just want to make sure that's not the intent of this. People should feel comfortable to come and share and um, yeah.
As, as I think we've tried to say in, in both conversations about this, and I think we will share in the communication with staff tomorrow, we want feedback around these, and input frankly, around these four topic areas. And, and there are some specific concerns that folks may have that they wish to share. That's what these sessions are designed to do, is to surface that. It could be an individual concern, it could be a group concern. I, I think our goal is to take those items and package them into something that we're able to say, this is what we heard across groups that we feel like administratively and at the board level, there needs to be some action on.
Any, I, Ms. Chen, were you about to?
I'm just curious about the, the timing, cause they're all, they're all offered in the, the evening time. I didn't know if there was any consideration to try to vary the timing or maybe have it be at different locations, maybe right after staff are getting off, you know, cause it's hard to work a long day and then, and then come back and, you know?
We talked about several iterations for, for how to put this together. And one of the things that, that we felt like was important was to, on October first, share that on October second, we were gonna give folks twenty-seven, twenty-eight days in order to ensure that they could participate by way of, you know, three or four weeks. If there's something that you need to share, we wanna give you the ample time in order to make yourself available. I think similarly, you'll note that we tried to schedule groups at different times and didn't necessarily want to privilege one group over another with respect to work schedules. So there was, there were a number of different conversation pieces, and we feel like as a starting point, this is the best way for us to get, get rolling. And then if we find that in, in future iterations, it needs to look different, I don't think we are uncomfortable doing that, but felt like in deference to the facilitators and participants, we needed to structure it this way. We also wanted to have building availability in terms of a large group space and small group space. And quite frankly, you'll find that to be really challenging as we get into the early fall.
Thank you.
In terms of um, and it's probably, you know, this is too early to say, uh, if you don't even know what the feedback's going to be, but how it's delivered to the board?
It'll be a formal presentation.
It'll be a public presentation?
Bringing, bringing all the themes together that were heard. You'll get the raw data, but we'll make a formal presentation of, of what was heard collectively across different groups.
So you'll summarize and highlight, but, but we will also see raw data?
Yes, that's our intent.
Like every complaint?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Or every success.
Or every success, right.
As the case may be.
Sure, I'm sure people are coming out to.
Well, I think our, our goal is to surface some of the positive things in, in perspectives as well. We also felt like by scheduling it on December, in December for that meeting, it sets us up well as an organization, both administratively and the board level, to address things as we go into the budget process for those items that might have fiscal implications. There could be some items that have no fiscal implications.
Sure. No, but that is, I think that's important for people to know too, because I think part of, part of what was being requested was for the board to hear sort of firsthand accounts. And, and while we won't be in these sessions, we will see the raw data of the firsthand accounts along with a summary in a formal presentation, okay?
This is a, a first time, uh, so it's on a trial run. I, I, I believe it will gain some momentum and I hope we get some wonderful ideas to do things even better. Uh, and that's certainly the intention.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, thank you very much. Look forward to this. Right, now we are reviewing some policies. I don't know, super long list tonight.
Yes, um, Dr. Kever's gonna take our, our most exciting piece of the agenda for the board, policy.
Starting to get a little bit of um, I don't know, a sense that folks don't love the policy conversation. This is, this is exciting.
This is exciting.
Our first policy this evening is seven point zero one, uh, grouping for instruction policy, IHI, last reviewed or revised, excuse me, in May of twenty nineteen. Uh, it is, I think it's important to note there is not a corresponding VSBA model policy that accompanies this. Uh, the revisions to this particular policy include um, changing the word assignment to grouping, and I'm on line seven. Uh, and then on line eight, adding to the extent that it facilitates teaching and learning. As the administrative team and the policy committee reviewed this, we are also recommending that the items listed on lines thirteen through nineteen be captured in a regulation as they are specific models for student grouping. Uh, and that, that, that regulation be um, uploaded to our board docs site as well. So in your agenda packet, you'll see the policy revisions and you'll also see the recommended regulation.
Thank you. Any questions? Dr. Riffle?
Can we define what um, grouping for instruction is? I think it's something that's maybe not well-known.
You mean the, the philosophy behind grouping for instruction? Right, there, there are a number of reasons that we may put students into various groups to enhance their structural opportunity. Uh, it could be based on their skill level, their achievement level. It could be based on the need to use specific instructional practices with certain groups of students. That, does that answer your question?
I just wanted to describe it honestly, like trying to, you know, give the superintendent, being clear, we're gonna give the superintendent some power if it passes to, and then within the jurisdiction of what the COTEC has, by removing some things that like are described publicly, you know, about availability of space and stuff like that. So, you know, we, we talked about that, but when we visit schools, it is like, maybe one of the biggest things we hear about is like, where remediation is happening or where this and that. Um, like I went to Twain and we talked about a teacher's lounge being used for some of that stuff, right? It's, they have a teacher's lounge, not every school has one, but it's a available space, right? But their administration has the power to do this stuff that's best for their students, so, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Doesn't look like it. Did you just raise your finger? No, okay. Okay, I think we can move on.
Excellent. The next one is policy JEC. So I'm now talking about agenda item seven point zero two, school admission. Uh, this policy was actually just last revised in June of twenty twenty-three. We took it back through the review process as a result of recent updates from the VSBA. In that particular review, we are not recommending any changes to our policy as we feel like the additional information in the VSBA policy is already incorporated in ours. In this case, you are simply approving that you have reviewed it and thereby starting another five-year clock.
Okay, any questions or comments on that?
Seven zero three, uh, we're asking you to review the revisions to policy JFCE, which is gang activity or association. Line... We might have lost the screen.
Yeah.
Twenty-three.
Line eighteen, we are suggesting a revision relative to the idea that JFC is now called student conduct, uh, not in, we're striking area of offenses and their definitions. And we're also in line twenty-two, adding the word displaying. That is in alignment with the VSBA model policy. We did have our attorney review this and they signed off.
That's always good. Any uh, concerns there? Okay, moving on.
Seven zero four, review revisions to policy KBC, news media relations. Uh, this was last revised in twenty nineteen. Uh, we did review the VSBA model policy. There's general similarity between those two. Uh, we have made some formatting changes for consistency with other current WJCC policies. No content changes recommended other than the adding create and to line twelve, uh, which is already part of the superintendent's purview per this policy. We made some updates to the regulation, uh, which included uh, further underscoring the need for and requirement to coordinate with our communications and engagement department in advance of media opportunities and also um, updating the name of the opt-out form for those that don't wish to have uh, media coverage. Last but not, last but not least this evening, uh, policy IFA, educational research. This was last revised in April of twenty sixteen. There's not an applicable VSBA model policy. In this particular um, policy, we are adding on line seven or outside agencies, uh, to include colleges and universities and other organizations that may submit requests to conduct research. We are deleting line eleven. Only those studies which have value to the school district will be approved. We're deleting that. The, the, the guts of this particular policy are really spelled out in a regulation which has been revised fairly substantively with respect to our, our administrative staff and guiding the process for doing educational research through and with the school division. We are fortunate, I think, with staff who shepherd this process as we receive inquiries and requests for conducting research. Uh, and she has helped put us in a, a stronger position in terms of the paperwork and the formatting for those requests, vetting those and being back in touch with uh, requesters.
Any questions or comments from the board? Does not appear to be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and we will move into our action items. Approval of personnel actions. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve personal actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm gonna give it to Mrs. Donner.
Mr. Riffle?
Hi.
Cavassos?
Hi.
Ms. Chen?
Hi.
Mrs. Donner?
Hi.
Mr. Hosang?
Hi.
Mrs. Hunley?
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Hi.
Alright, the next three are um, approvals of the various committees that we discussed last time. So item eight point zero two, approval of appointments to the career-ready advisory committee. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the appointments to the career-ready advisory committee for a two-year term ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffle?
Hi.
Dr. Cavassos?
Hi.
Ms. Chen?
Hi.
Mrs. Donner?
Hi.
Mr. Hosang?
Hi.
Mrs. Hunley?
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Hi.
Eight point zero three, approval of appointments to the special education advisory committee.
Move to approve appointments to the special education advisory committee for a two-year term ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Ms. Chen?
Hi.
Mrs. Donner?
Hi.
Mr. Hosang?
Hi.
Mrs. Hunley? Mr. Riffle?
Hi.
Dr. Cavassos?
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Hi.
Eight point zero four, approval of appointments to the student advisory committee.
Madam Chair, I move to approve appointments to the student advisory committee for a two-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Mr. Riffle?
Hi.
Dr. Cavassos? Dr. Cavassos.
Hi.
Ms. Chen.
Hi.
Mrs. Donner.
Hi.
Mr. Hosang.
Hi.
Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi.
Eight point zero five, approval of release from compulsory attendance, case number R two four two five dash oh eight.
Madam Chair, I move to approve release from compulsory attendance, case number R two four two five dash zero eight.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hosang.
Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Mr. Riffle.
Hi.
Dr. Cavassos.
Hi.
Ms. Chen.
Hi.
Mrs. Donner.
Hi.
Mr. Hosang.
Hi.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi. Um, and we have, um, a final action item. Before we introduce that, I'm going to turn the floor to Dr. Heron.
Madam Chair, it's with mixed emotions this evening that I announce my retirement as superintendent of Williamsburg James City County Schools. My retirement date will be January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I'm making this decision now to enable the board to immediately begin the process of selecting the next superintendent of schools. There's no perfect time, uh, to transition from a leadership role. My choice is to make that decision while I still love what I do every day and when I know the state of W J C C schools is strong. I believe that now is the time to pass the torch of leadership. Right now, we have stability and strong leadership in every single school. We have stability and strong leadership in the senior leadership team and you've seen more of their great work this evening. We are launching later this month an updated strategic plan, elevate beyond excellence bridge to twenty twenty-eight that will set our course and direction for the next four years. We also have increased student performance across all schools. We've seen dramatic increases in student attendance and all of our schools are fully accredited. We have amazing, committed, competent and passionate staff in every school, office and department who are making a difference for our students every day. I'm proud of the work we've accomplished together and I'm extremely hopeful and optimistic about the future of W J C C schools. This is a time of growth for you and for me, a time of change, a time of, time of possib- possibility. And I want you to be excited about it too. A communication will go out to all staff, the community and media this evening. Meanwhile, I want you to know, squeak again. Serving W J C schools as superintendent has been the greatest honor of my professional life and I'm truly blessed to have served in this community. Madam Chair, I'm not complacent by announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. And, um, we thank you for the, um, the way that you have made this decision. I know this was an incredibly difficult and deeply personal decision. Um, and you've done it in a way that provides the most, uh, possibility for success for the board to, um, at the most time and success for the board to find a replacement and, uh, to s- to set everyone up for, um, stability and, um, we really appreciate the way you've gone about this and the, and the thought you've put into it and the amount that, of work that you've done to prepare the way forward for us. Appreciate it. Um, I will ask for a motion and then I'll open it up to other discussion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the superintendent's notice of retirement effective February first, twenty twenty-five and authorize the chair and board to execute such documents as are necessary.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mrs. Donner.
Hi.
Mr. Hosang.
Hi.
Mrs. Hunley. Mr. Riffle.
Hi.
Dr. Cavassos.
Hi.
Ms. Chen.
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi.
So we now roll into board member comments and I'd like to just
Before we do that, I do wanna mention the ducks. The benefit of everyone.
It's mine.
Each senior leadership got a, a duck this morning to suggest, actually chose the color of the hair as well, by the way. Very exciting, very exciting moment, uh, because I told them I wouldn't be a lame duck between that and January thirty-first. Okay, so lots of work still to do and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I, I'm just gonna open it up to any comments that the board might like to make in response to this announcement. Um, I won't put anyone on the spot. So if anyone would like to go first, I'll let you. Mr. Riffle?
Sure. Thank you, Miss Ordigo. I'm Madam Chair, sorry. Um, Dr. Heron, thank you for your announcement. Um, I, it'll take me a minute to get through this. I just wanted to know how, uh, yeah. I, you were one of the first faces I've seen in the division when I arrived. And I am thankful as an emerging leader on this board of your leadership so far. I think we've challenged you a lot in the past nine months. Um, someone asked me the other day how long I've served on a school board and I told him it was less than a year and they're like, you're not a school board member yet. And I was like, Dr. Heron says otherwise. She, she looks to me and she asks me questions. She invites me to meetings. Um, and that's, it's been an honor to work with you, Dr. Heron. You are an amazing public servant and a guiding light to maybe, you know, to, you know, January thirty-first, but we know we have maybe a little more time with you. But I, uh, I'm just thankful for your service and the time to be with you. Um, do I go into my other board member remarks or?
I'll let people go around again.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Heron.
Mr. Hosang.
Yeah, um, I, as with everyone here, we're gonna thank you very much for your dedicated service, um, to our students and to our employees. Um, uh, I, and I personally wanna thank you for everything that you've done for, for them. Um, I also wanna thank you for your vision, um, and your, your, the planning that you, that, that goes into running the school system and you looking forward a year, two years, five years, ten years. And making sure that we as a board know what to expect, um, moving forward. Um, as a new board member, I mean, that means a lot. Um, to have someone with that, um, expertise in order to keep us moving forward. Um, and as I said previously, um, and again, this is very selfish as a, a school board member, I wanna thank you for making yourself available, um, for this board and for the school system moving forward if anything should happen to come up. Um, uh, there's been, like, in my experience, there's been a lot of times when people, when they retire, they retire. And they say sayonara to whatever business that they, they're leaving. And so I wanna really thank you for giving us your time and, and still being there to support us and to help us.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Um, I remember the day I met Dr. Heron, it was a W J C A meeting. And we had a superintendent who had come from a school system that had kindergartens that were up to thirty students in a room and no assistant. And he had kinda pulled all our assistants and, uh, one other young lady and I, we were hot that day. We were upset and we were trying to keep composure and we were all talking and all of a sudden this wee little voice came. I, and I think everybody turned and we looked and Dr. Heron had made some statements about it. And I was like, where has he been hiding her? Never met her. And, I mean, I'd been in the division a long time. I guess that's like fourteen some years ago and she was just the voice of reason and it was calm and it was, it, so it, it, it made the day. But, um, I don't really believe in goodbyes. It's, you know, I don't say goodbye. It's see you later, um, wish you well, come back, all that. So, and I'm sure we're gonna give you your due again, but I just wanted to talk about the first day I met you and, um, the friendships that, for, for me to transition from teacher to it's, you know, president to board and you've helped me to slap my hand a couple of times, but I knew it was out, out of love. And so, um, but I would say you're truly a, a great superintendent and a great friend and I wish you well.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Ms. Chen, can I?
Yes.
Um, I am gonna try to do this without crying. Um, I, um, I am, one, one big reason why I even considered being on the school board is because of you and your stability and, um, the leadership that you've brought to our division. Um, I cannot thank you enough. Um, and I believe I speak for hundreds and thousands of our families and students, um, throughout the years that I hear nothing but praise and gratitude. Um, so I will be the deliverer of that message and I'm sure you will continue to hear a lot of that from many families that are in the division and raising our kids in the division and you have made a true difference. Um, and so I thank you for your steadfast and selfless leadership, um, and guiding us. Um, I thank you for, um, always treating us professionally and giving us, um, great advice and you advocate so fearlessly for what we need and what our students need. You always have a clear justification for your beliefs and they are student-centered. Um, and so I thank you for all of that. And it's quite timely that I was looking through this, um, I, I didn't think about this, but I was looking through this impact report and there's a quote here. So Roald Dahl's Matilda is one of, in our family, one of our favorite books. And it says somewhere inside of us is the, the power to change the world. And I think that that just speaks really truly to you and that character Matilda, she's fiery and fearless and witty and smart. And that just reminded me of you when I saw that. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Cavassos.
Uh, Dr. Heron, um, I'll just cut to the chase, alright?
Go for it.
In my opinion, um, you set the standards for a very successful mission as a superintendent. And I only hope that in the future we can find somebody who can not only sit in your sh- chair but is capable of filling your shoes. Thank you so very much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Ms. Donner?
It has been, I, you know, I've had some time to process this, I think, a little bit maybe than more than our viewing, viewing audience. And it's just the way that you have, as Mrs. Ordigo said, approached the process with us as leaders of the, of the board, as chair and vice chair and I think as, as, uh, Mr. Hosang said, some people just retire. But you have been so thoughtful about each step along the process and making sure that we are supported as you exit. And I think it's just one of many examples of your character, of your care, of your continuing care for the division to make sure that we are taken care of so that we can take care of the faculty and the staff, the students and the families. And so I know we'll have many more times to say thank you, but just for this, um, support that you've given me as a new vice chair and as a relatively new school board member, um, and the advice and the thoughts and the steady hand, I'm just really, really grateful to have served under you and with you.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Yeah, I, um, I also just wanna thank you personally. Um, I am, I still consider myself a pretty new board member and so stepping into this role as chair, um, was not undaunting and it was probably not undaunting for you, for you. You've been, um, just incredibly gracious, um, and, and steady and calm and um, a beacon to look to for how things should be and should, um, yeah, just of, of grace and stability and, and co- and calm. And I, I feel like that is, um, very needed, not just in our division, but just in the world in general. It's a lot to, uh, a lot, a lot to get excited and, and upset about in our world and, um, we need steady leadership that is, that is calm and thoughtful and, um, cares deeply. And that, that is certainly who you are. Um, you led this division not just through the past seven years, but probably the seven most difficult years for anyone working in education, certainly as a superintendent. Um, I'm sure because of the pandemic, there are a number of, of goals that you, you had coming into this role and every expectation of of seeing to full fruition that perhaps did not come all the way to fruition in the manner in which you, um, would have expected and you should, you would deserve to get to see. But, um, that will still come and, and it will be evident to everyone who remains here and, and for years to come, the, the the fruit of your labor, um, will absolutely bear, bear fruit for a long time. And so we appreciate all you've done for this division and, and for us as a board. And I just do want to reiterate that, um, Dr. Heron did, did give us, um, enough, you know, more notice than, than she ever needed to. And even this announcement is far more, um, gracious than it needs to be in, in terms of time and, and setting us up for, for success. And as, as chair, who's relatively inexperienced school board member, I personally thank you for that. Um, as we, we lead this next effort to, um, to do your legacy justice by finding the, the next person to sit in your chair. So thank you so much. And this is not, um, you know, this is not her last night, so. So the good is we get to do this all again in January.
We have to work more. We're still working.
Yes. Alright, um.
Thank, thank you very much for all those lovely gracious comments. Thank you.
Alright, if there are any other, um, board member comments that are not on this topic, just raise your hand, because I won't put everyone on the spot, but if you'd like to say something.
Pick me, pick me.
Okay, there you go.
Um, Mr. Riffle and I got to go to Toano today. Um, on, it, it was so calm. Every building's been calm. I think that's great. One thing I liked, I saw, uh, learned a new word, balanced learning. And so they're balancing technology with, um, ha- with, uh, writing. And, and I know that's why writing scores really went up, because to see young people writing and taking notes was exhilarating. So, um, it was just, it was a pleasure. And to see my kindergarteners now, um, just doing big things. And then some of them are at War Hill and, um, it, you know, they, they make it and they do well. So that was the first thing. That was one. And second, it, um, went to, um, with Ms. Donner to Jamestown High School. I'll talk a little bit about that. I'm gonna let her say a lot, but, um, I got to stay for a shark tank type presentation that I do on address. Um, they also went to James River with Ms. Chen. And I just have to say a shout out to the guidance department. Um, when I was teaching, we had the zones of regulation. It's these colors and you really want the children in green. That's where you want to be for the day. Now, they may show up in yellow and there were things we would do, like do you need a snack? Do you need a nap? Do you need to talk with someone? Cause we really need you at green. Rarely did they get, you know, come in on a red, but, um, the, the goal is to get to green. Um, but they had incorporated Inside Out Two, the movie. Now, I know some of you probably haven't seen it. It's an animated show. I do believe those animated shows are really for adults. They say they're for children, but the messages in there are for adults. And so I was really thinking about, um, that when I think about where we sit, like tonight, I love work sessions because we really get to do the work, right? We don't have, we don't start off worried or, so I thought about that and, and I'm probably gonna get emails about this and I'm okay with that. Um, you know, citizens' comments, um, I was thinking about Inside Out and, you know, people come to the mic and, and we welcome everyone. But I was thinking about some of the character, okay, here comes anger. Oh, here comes, you know, anxiety. Here comes envy, you know, the person that sends me the emails, can't wait till I re-up so that they can take, take my seat. Um, here comes depression. But rarely do we get joy. And so that's what I like to be. I mean, that's why I love board comments. I'm joy. I want joy. And it's okay in life. I get it. It's a sad time. You know, we shed some tears, but those little ducks brought back the joy, right? And so it's okay for all the people out there that think social, emotional learning is not good. These children can relate to, yeah, if this happens, this is how you rebound. And that brings me to Jamestown. The students had to do these presentations. There were five groups and there were five, about five kids. They had to pitch their idea for this competition for the nests. Each child had a speaking part. I think they had less than two minutes, cause they were going. I, I don't think it was three. And, um, so one group was present- And so one group was presenting and one of the students was reading and kinda got off. And I saw it come. That she turned red, she, she got very emotional, she could barely breathe. And the teacher, knowing this student, they probably, they probably had this before, said, someone step in. Her teammates stepped in, finished her sentence and then a girl from the left side came and got her. They went outside, I don't know if they counted to ten, took deep breaths, had water wet and she came back in. And they finished their presentation. Everybody cheered and they sat down and at the end, I just, I watched her through the other two presentations and. At the end, after Mr. Townsend had the winner and everything, I just had to make sure she was okay and she was good. But that's the way we should be, right? That's joy. We need to have each other's back, we need to say, it's okay if you fall apart, I'm here to pick you up. I'm here to, you know, give you that hug, you got this and so. Anyone out there listening, next school board meeting, hopefully we're wearing orange, everybody knows that, right? Because it'll be the day before anti-bullying. I'll text y'all, make sure everybody gets the message to wear orange and I hope, I hope we get, I know we'll get people come to the mic. But I'm calling for some joy because we have a lot of great things going on and, and I'm not trying to pump up my Facebook page, but if you. Have any anxiety, depression, anger, anything, you go look and see what is really going on in schools. We, we got some great things going on, our kids are doing well and we need to celebrate that. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Mr. Riffle, you had, you had something else that you said you wanted to.
Yes, of course.
Go, go next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we went to the conference with Ms. Chen about the policy, learned a lot about the government and how it's maybe doing worse things than shit. But it's definitely moving and doing stuff where I don't know because the General Assembly has yet to meet for the next cycle, but there is a lot happening. The governor's office and the DOE and our Department of Education. I think I mentioned it previously, but these things are happening without really. Understanding the full standard, like we're being told here's the end of result, like you will, here's your five things that will give you accreditation, but we don't know how we get there, like it's kinda like. We're implementing a lot of this stuff for literacy, we're like learning some that asks questions about what about the supplemental stuff, what about this and that, like this is the part that wraps around and. Really helps us understand this thing, so I'm interested to see how that comes about, I really hope it comes quicker than, and sooner rather than later. And there's a couple, you know, other things that our schools similarly would like to see, like to know more about the split happening, that's really important to me, I think at this point we're. We're getting to a point where this is becoming a problem and should be talked about more. And then, you know, I'll end my positive stuff because I, I think there is a lot that we are doing, like as Ms. Henley suggested. And I, I see it every time I go to schools and I, I see people, you know, I, I guess the more you talk at these meetings, people recognize you. Which is good or bad, I don't know, but I heard a lot about people saying, really encouraged by the self policy, I, I've not heard a single person besides a student. Which, sorry, boys and girls or that's not related people I'm trying to please. It's like we have things to do, we have academics to go after, we have achievements and, and things that we wanna grow this year, that's the whole point of it. But even some of the students that we've talked to or heard from are, you know, are a parent, have their kid with them, they're like, they enjoyed, you know. Being able to engage and, and be loud, to be a part of their class and, and to refocus and I think that mission has been accomplished at this point and. And we're getting to a point where that this is not an infractionary thing, this is not, you know, something we're gonna be moving towards. Punishment or, you know, round four, like, you know, what's going on, here's whoever. We are seeing this stuff, like in, we've seen our results as we move towards the next part. I did went to visit Stonehouse Elementary with Ms. Chen, it was awesome, it's my first time there, the C stars got some great. Art and murals going on there, I mean, that is an impressive school when it comes to, like the overall infrastructure, but I mean, going down each hallway. You're learning as you're walking, I mean, like I, I've never seen, I, I work in a capital that's very historic and. There's murals up there that like kind of mirror some of the stuff that goes on there, like I, I mean, this, whoever did that work needs to be commended again. And maybe brought out to do some other stuff in our division. They also have this like large garden that, you know, apparently was whacked down a couple of years back and then. Lots of people from the Native Plant Society and things across America were mad, which I did not know, but it's impressive to see that like we have such great. Members of our community who care about such important things as our schools, at the garden, you know, things that are like, people just want the grass cut, but, you know, I wanna see things that. Invite education to our students and meets them where they are, you know, and that's what education's all about and. It's been great to hear from that principal and talk about, like, she did make a mistake, she did kind of do something that, you know, she tried to search for the answer, who is in charge of this garden? And I couldn't find it, but then of course they made themselves very aware. The last thing we did this today was Toano, Toano Middle School, that was pretty cool, I did also learn about balanced learning, but I was also a part of balanced learning. When I was in school, because bring your own device was like thing, you know, like that's kind of the, we're in the reverse of that now, it's like, please stop bringing your device. And though it's like interesting to see that dynamic happen and, and that's something I think a lot of people have talked about in the last year or so, it was like we moved into this era of COVID ending and. Us not even using snow days as virtual days or whatever, you know, like this stuff is kind of just old news, like we gotta get back to what education's about, which is hands on. You know, are you good at this or not, like let's fix that, let's get to it, you know, and that's what we saw today, like, I mean. I, the university principal, who was a history teacher, talked about English in ways that are well understood, like I, I think many instructors and many administrators do know what. Their teachers are teaching, but I think with their curriculum and stuff we're dealing with and we've asked or we've prepared for this year, especially at those, those levels, I. I'm impressed by our staff and it's, it's encouraging and we did meet a couple of people who you don't really see, we saw the maintenance worker and he was like, it's been crazy, you know. But he's been enjoying his job and then he has other colleagues that have joined him and he's thankful for that and. I did see like, this is the last thing I'll say, that was something interesting, they had this like, these little superhero posters at Toano Middle School of like their. Like support staff and it's like meet your support staff and fun little things about them and I just knew it was so cool, like you could walk around it, it's not like it's a wanted poster or something. It was like, it was very encouraging to see like what, who they are people, they are people who are serving our division and they're serving the school every day. They're not seen or talked to or maybe, you know, teaching classes, but they are interacting with their students and they're awesome people, so. And that's kinda what tomorrow's all about, I'm excited to see how we, you know, support our custodians and that, so. That's all I have to say, I'm, I'm encouraged by today's presentations and I wanna say welcome to our new students on the student advisory committee. Because that is gonna be so fun, excited to do a full year, not just two meetings and we're back to summer, so. You're right, Dr. Worley and Ms. Smallpoint, Ms. Chen and I are coming, you know, we're excited to learn and have fun and it'll be a good year, so, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Other comments board members would like to make, I'm not gonna make everyone.
I'll go next since what I have to say relates to what's already shared, so yes. Mr. Riffle and I went to the conference and it was, it was great. And I'll just mention really quickly, I think one of the biggest takeaway for me, I mean, I have pages of notes here, but I'm, I won't bore everybody with those. But I think the biggest takeaway for us as a board and they gave us some advice about advocacy with our legislators. As, as the General Assembly prepares to meet. One of the biggest take action steps I think for us to think about is, they said, you know, try to meet before January. So I don't know if there's a way for us to do that, but just something for us to think about and have like a list of priorities and things that are really specific to our. Division that we can advocate for before they meet in January, because once they meet in January, it's just. As Mr. Riffle can speak to, I mean, it's hard to, to sort of try to make any real change at that point, so I think the sooner we could try. I don't know, like, I, I'm sure Mr. Riffle can give us some advice on how best to. Get the ear of some of our delegates and legislators, but yeah, that was a big takeaway from that conference for me. And then I, I enjoyed my, I just really quickly say I enjoyed my visits to Stonehouse Elementary School. And James River Elementary School, so it's like on both ends and I realized, wow, our division is really big. I did not allocate enough time from my house to get to both locations, so I was a little bit late to both visits. Because it took me a little while to get there, but I was like, this is, this is great, it was great to be on both ends to learn about the different populations at the schools. That the different needs at those schools, to walk around with Principal Washington at, at James River. I'll just mention real quick, I was so impressed at all the community outreach they do, they provide food to families, they do like kickball games. So, oh, I think just for our, our board, they have a trunk or treat coming up, so we should try to do that, we should dress up.
I'm joy.
Yeah, yeah, Inside Out, you could be joy, I can be sadness. I just really like the body sweater, but. But I will add to what Ms. Henley said about the social emotional learning. I think that I learned so much and was so encouraged by meeting with the counselors. When they explained social emotional learning to us, like not only is it on the bulletin, these beautiful bulletins with positive messages. And, and just helping kids find their voice and be able to get, advocate for what they need. Themes like respect, listening, kindness, taking turns, you know, valuing every person's opinion. That is what social emotional learning is and that is really. That you really see it played out in the classroom, they have, they have intentional calming corners, which I think in the adult world and in our professional lives. It'd be nice to have like a calming corner where there's like soft music playing and you could just take a few minutes. Which is so important for those elementary school kids, so I, I, I love seeing like flexible seating. And then at, at Stonehouse, the other thing for all of us to put on our calendars is they have an amazing Veterans Day program. So I'm excited to go to that and then we also talked to the counselors and volunteers there. Excuse me, who are putting together food bags. For students to take home with food for the weekend and they do that every week and they get donations from. Community partners and, and, thank you, Mr. Riffle, we also talked to, he reminded us we needed to go, we talked to the cafeteria staff. And they not only feed the kids, but they feed everybody in the building, they provide meals to the adults and the teachers. And these like very delicious nutritious meals, so we, we talked about going back and having lunch there. Right, right, I was like, oh, that sounds so good. And then the last thing is I just got my tickets for the Dia de los Meros cultural dance celebration at War Hill High School. So again, encouraging today, it's just like all about, all our board members, we should go to support this, it's on October seventeenth. There's two shows, so make it happen, four thirty or six thirty, there's also food there. Lato Tecca is providing food, so you got a food, you got a dance performance, it's just gonna be a good time. And, and we were all involved with voting for the poster that they've been putting around. So that was a very involved process. And so the posters are beautiful, so yes, I'm hoping to see all, all of us there at all of these events.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Any other comments? Going once, going twice, okay. Well, I will just close with brief comments, I was, I really appreciated the, the two very substantive presentations tonight. On the. Leap, what is it? I know ESL stands for, I'm not, what is it, language? Okay, for the English language learners. On that program, I, that was, that was a, a board requested presentation and so we really appreciate all the. The time and effort that went into that presentation, but of course the time and effort that goes into the actual program as well, I think it, it highlighted. A lot of need, it, it was good to explain how the process works. Just help us and the public understand. Just how it works from, from enrollment to hopefully graduation and, and successful future, but we do have. It's, it's not a small thing and we do have increasing numbers, so we have to. Not just look in our, in our own budget, but I think advocate at state and federal levels because this is a. Not just a Williamsburg, James City County problem, not a problem, a, a topic, it's a state and, and national. Thing that we have to grapple with, so. And I appreciated the work and the effort that went into the employee input process. Again, that was generated from the, the board, a board request to staff on top of everything, so we really appreciate. The amount of effort that has gone into it and, and will still come over the fall, I, I do hope employees will take advantage. Of this opportunity, it is a genuine effort. Ultimately for the board to hear you and understand you and, and act in whatever way we, is within our jurisdiction to act to. To help, so that's the purpose, so I do hope everyone will take advantage of it. I, going back to Dr. Heron's announcement, I, I know that you cared. You care very deeply for children and students, but you also care very deeply for your staff and not just your immediate staff, but. All the staff throughout the division, I know that's something that weighs up, weighs on you all the time, it's always with you. And I, I know just from the faces in this room, I don't know how much the viewing public can see, but I believe that that feeling is mutual for sure. And I want to reassure the staff, the staff and, and beyond this room. That this board will do everything in our power to make this transition as smooth as possible. I know we will collaborate, we will lean, we will lean on a lot of the senior leadership, we will work with you and alongside you. And I know you will all be very supportive and together we will make this transition for all the staff. As, as easy as possible and so I just want staff throughout the division to be reassured that. This, this won't be major turmoil, we, we, we got it, so. Alright. I will read some upcoming events. Our special education advisory committee will meet on October tenth at six thirty PM. Chesterfield?
No, I think that's switch, switch the second one to the top.
I hope not.
Those were the conferences that we went to.
Is that in room three hundred? Special Education Advisory Committee will meet on October tenth here in room three hundred in the annex of the school board and central office. The career ready advisory committee, will they be in Chesterfield?
No, that was the conference last.
Where will the career ready advisory, will they be in room three hundred as well? Okay, I apologize. Career ready advisory committee will also be here in room three hundred on October sixteenth at three thirty PM. Three hundred of the annex. Policy committee will be on October seventeenth at eight thirty AM. Room two hundred and three of the school board and central office and student advisory committee on October thirtieth. At three PM at Lafayette High School Media Center. And our next meetings, our next meeting is on October fifteenth, closed session will begin at six PM here in room three hundred of the annex. Followed by our regular meeting with public hearing on recommended capital improvement plan at six thirty PM in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. After that, we will have a closed session on November twelfth at four PM here in room three hundred of the annex. Followed by work session and action items also on November twelfth at four thirty PM here in room three hundred of the annex. Our agenda is set for the next regular meeting, the policies we discussed will be on a consent agenda. Assuming everyone is good with that. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.